23rd, 2021. Again, this is a reminder, this is a special city council meeting. So we will only be discussing the topics that are on our agenda. Would ask that anyone in the audience or at the dice go ahead and put their electronic devices on silent or on vibrate. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Here.
Padugula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Zitma?
Here. Number two is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three on our agenda is the 2022 preliminary budget discussion. Our city manager, Mr. Harold Stewart, has a presentation before we open up on general discussion.
Yes, so last council meeting last Monday, council directed staff to come back with some alternatives to the budget that would result in basically no increase to the mill levy, as was in comparison to last year's fiscal year budget. And so that's what we have completed in all openness and fairness. I did meet with the management team and department meeting last week and asked for any additional feedback they had with regards to the budget, but a bulk of the recommendations tonight come from deliberation between myself and the finance director. Management team has done a great job through the management process and participating in the process all the way up to here, but we felt at this point it was more effective and more efficient for us to go through that conversation executively and prioritize some of these things going forward. So this is a reflection of, this is truly a city manager recommendation on this time, so including the input from the department heads from previous parts of the process. So just as a budget recap, total 2022 budget that was proposed was for $175.9 million. It was proposed with a 123.57 mil, which was an increase over last year's, which was $143.5 million in total budget. And last year's mill levy request was 121.29 mils. So the current levy with 123.57 mil levy, which was included in this fiscal year's ask, is a difference of 2.28 mil from 2021, which represents about $10.26 per 100,000 valuation. So I'm going to stop and pause here and talk a little bit because I've changed the presentation here with regards to the tax impact that it have to the potential public trying to simplify this and make this simpler and easier to understand for the public. So typically, what you've seen in the past is a comparison of what this property tax increase proposal would be on a median priced house, 187,000. That can be different for all types of people and a little bit difficult to convert depending on what the assessed value of your property is. And so staff worked to make this in increments of 100,000. So basically, if you have a house that's 300,000, you can multiply that 10.26 by three and you can get a rough estimate of what the impact would be. I think that's more representative. I think that's more transparent and I think that's more relatable and understandable for the general public and understanding what these conversations and discussions may have in regards to a financial impact to them specifically. So that is a little bit of a change here with this presentation versus some prior presentations, trying to make that more understandable and more transparent to the public. So at the last council meeting, again, council directed us to try and get back to that 121.29 mils that was levied last year, 2.28, that represents about $489,705 in targeted reductions in costs. So with that, these are, in the previous presentation, these were all the positions that were requested for consideration and built into the budget. You'll see those in the bracketed are the mill levy positions. These are the ones that are funded directly through the mill levy. Those that are not bracketed are funded through our enterprises funds. So even if you cut those, those would not contribute towards that $489,000 reduction. So moving forward, I am just going to focus on these general fund, mill levy funded positions. And right now, the assumption is that those enterprise fund positions remain in the budget and council can discuss that if you so choose, but in order to reduce that 489,000, I'll be focusing primarily on the mill levy impacting positions. So again, in the proposed budget, here is all those general fund positions. As you can see, those were funded at different levels, anywhere from a three month to a full 12-month funding mechanism through there, and then the different dollar amounts that were built into the budget based off of those assumptions. I want to take a moment. One of the items here on the very end was the non-career full, the 31,780. We haven't had a lot of significant conversation on that, so I wanted to take a moment to talk about this with the council and the public. Basically, we don't treat, currently, our practice has not been to treat all full-time employees as the same. We have four positions that are full-time positions, but are not considered career positions. In other words, we pay full-time salary, but they do not receive any other additional benefits from the city such as health insurance, life insurance, those types of things. So that's created some consternation, particularly with the individuals that are in these four positions. And it's my recommendation that we do away with that practice and we treat all full-time employees as full-time employees equally. And this also has created some issues as we're converting to the new software. The software, this is a pretty rare circumstance. I've never seen cities take this approach with full-time employees. And because it's such a rare circumstance, the software companies that provide the software for financial management don't have that built in. So they were having some struggles in how to account for that within our software system, our new software that we have coming forward. And so based off of, more so for the equity purpose, but also for the software issue, recommending that that be adjusted and fixed through this budget. So if you take all of those positions, that's a total of $629,618 total. That's built into the budget now. Again, not all those positions are fully funded. Those are arranged from three months to full. So there's a couple of different approaches here that I'll walk through here for you in what the finance director and I looked at in some mechanisms to try and make these cuts as the council has asked in some different options. But I do want to take a moment here and talk about the white box in the upper left-hand corner. So not, not all the cuts were proposed based off of the new positions. And so we had $100,000 built into the budget to do a space assessment of the current city hall and its potential to meet the police department needs for the future. And so we took an approach there similar to what we've done with Fire Station Five and the retaining wall where we're proposing to split that out over two fiscal years. So we'll budget 50,000 this year and the remainder next year for consideration. So there's a $50,000 cut there. As we reviewed through some of the personnel numbers, we did find a code enforcement officer position that was still in the budget but had been eliminated previously. So that 57,086 has been proposed as a removal because that's not a position that's needed anymore. And then Chief Klug also went through his personnel budget and through some of our transition and promotions and different changes that have happened since we started the budget process. There was a difference of just under $159,000 there that he talked about could potentially be reduced to help meet the target and the goal that the council has directed. So that was a total savings of 265,798 towards that 498,000 that we're targeting to cut. So the first option would be is to just fund no general fund positions at all, which would be a total cut of 629,618 plus the 265,798. And that reduces that down significantly. So that is a total savings of 894,416 or a 4.17 mil reduction. So in essence, if you took this option, it would be a property tax decrease to the public because we would ask for 4.17 mils less than what we asked for last year. The second option is, as I went through and taking all the input from the management team and everything else as we've gone through the entire budget process, these are the positions that I felt were of importance. Not that they're not all important, but ones that should remain in the budget and have significant impact based off of prior commitments or the service level delivery it would provide to the public. So we have in here, so this would include a, the police department forensic technician, two dispatchers, the plumbing inspector, an additional mechanic in public works, two property maintenance positions for the new city hall, and then two new bus drivers for two new additional routes throughout the community. So that cuts a total, well, that cuts 293,000 in new positions. You take the additional savings previously, it's just under $559,000 and 2.6 mils cut. And you can see down there in the bottom left-hand corner on all these slides is the target and the mill levy cut that we're trying to hit. So that exceeds what council has directed us to do. So that would in effect be a property tax decrease if this is the option that the council chooses to go forward with. Now, in talking with the police chief, my prioritization of the positions he asked for did not match with his. And so this option is basically the previous option of mine, but instead of my prioritization of the three different positions he asked for, or I'm sorry, five different positions he's asked for, this would reflect his prioritization. So that would, so basically, this removes the two dispatchers and adds the police department PIO position. So that'd be just under $300,000 in cuts in new positions. That'd be a total cut of 473,000. Does not quite hit the 2.28 mil, but is close. The next approach I took was what positions have additional funding coming in that, so the city's not paying 100% of that. So there are cost share positions. And if we looked at those, so it adds service, but the citizens of Minot are not paying 100% of that cost. That would be the two dispatch positions and the two public works bus route positions and then the non-career adjustment that we talked about previously. This would be a total cut of 739,948, about a 3.45 mil decrease, which again exceeds the 2.28 mil target. But this would also represent a decrease in property tax to the general public. This is an option that I consider previously committed projects, projects that we already have in the works and positions that help facilitate the needs that come with those commitments. Obviously, dispatch providing public safety continues to be an ongoing need. So that's included. Plumbing inspector, you know, our inspection department is very busy, especially with the new hospital going on right now, difficulty keeping up with a lot of those. So that remains in there. The two heavy equipment operators out of public works, these are tied to, again, all the new infrastructure with flood mitigation and stormwater. And we've already made that commitment in what we're trying to do. And so these would help with that and help us maintain our streets properly through the rest of the organization in the community. The two maintenance positions for the new city hall, we have new city hall already purchased, we're proceeding with remodeling and everything else, so those are already committed to. And then bus service, while not previously committed as far as the two new routes, but we do provide bus service, we have the new hospital going in. And again, these are cost shared positions that we don't bear the full brunt of those costs. So that's a total 540,851 in cuts, 2.52 mils. So that was, this option would also represent a reduction in property tax mill levy for the general public. This option is if we just looked at public safety only. This is a common practice for a lot of communities and I think it's one that the city of Minot has used previously in the past. So if we were just to fund the new positions requested by public safety going forward, that would be $606,776 in cuts or 2.83 mil. So we could fund those positions and still have a reduction in property tax to the public. So just as a reminder, based off of all my assessment, considering all factors, all needs, again, my recommended option was option two, which is a reduction in 558, well, just under 559,000, a 2.6 mil reduction. So that would be a reduction by 0.32 mils to the property tax. Now, I have another, so total mill levy would be 120.97 on that one. So before I move on, because there's another aspect to this that I want to talk about with the council, going back to some of Alderman Janser's concerns that he expressed at the last council meeting. But before I move on to that option, is there any other questions about the options and what's in or out on all of these and the mill levy impacts and those types of things that council has at this juncture of the presentation?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for Harold at this time on what's been presented so far? And certainly, if there are questions that come back around, we can certainly
Sure.
Come back around to him as well. And I'll wait for just a moment here as we do have one on the line in case he chimes in.
We're good.
Okay. Go ahead and continue and we'll, we'll have questions when you're complete then.
So I briefly wanted to run through the same scenario, but one of the concerns was last time as we started, you know, not all of these positions are funded in fully. They range from three months to full 12 months of funding. That's due mainly in part because a lot of these positions, we're not going to be able to fill in time to warrant budgeting 12 months worth. But at the same time, again, Alderman Janser's concerns and then my concerns as well as the finance directors is, with those only partially being funded, we have to build that full funding in in the next budget. And that has a major impact. And so there is some logic to making sure that we build in the full cost and make sure that we can sustain that for the future. And so I wanted to run through these options and alternatives with the full funding in place for each of these positions. So basically, what you'll see here is, again, here's all your general fund positions, but this is a full 12-month funding cost for those. And as opposed to the, I think it was 689,000 cost that was built in the budget previously, now we're up over $1 million for these. So if we go through those same scenarios, no general fund positions, and I need to stop and talk here. So when we add the full cost in, that means I have to build that difference of full cost back into the mill levy. That takes the mill levy up to 125, which we can't do because we've already presented a preliminary budget with 123. So we don't have the ability to come and build these positions in fully based off of the preliminary budget that's already been approved by council and the letters that have gone out to the public. So that's not an option. But for purposes of making sure the math comes out correctly, those were built back into these calculations, which means now, instead of the two mil decrease, we need to target a reduction in $863,000 or a 4.02 mil levy reduction as we go through these options in order to make those work and keep the mill levy flat as was directed by council previously. So the prior city manager, this was the option two that I presented underneath the partially funded, if you take those exact same positions and keep them in the budget, that only represents a $640,724 decrease or a 2.98 mil reduction, which does not meet the 4.02 reduction for that option. So that option no longer works with the fully funded mechanism in there. Go back to the city manager and exchanging for the police chief's prioritizations in here, that's 691,531 or a 322 mil reduction. Still does not meet the 4.02 reduction. Have to go back and look at the calculation and see if that meets the 123. If we did just the cost shared positions, that's a total reduction, 989,583 reduction of mils by 4.61, so that option would work and would still represent a decrease in property tax assessment to the general public. If we went through the prior committed two positions, it's a reduction of 639,554. It's only 2.98 mils. So that option no longer works here. We did public safety only. That's a reduction of just under $834,000, 3.88 mils, does not meet the 4.02 target. So I went through and redid a recommendation here of what positions would remain in if council chooses to go with the fully funded mechanism, which means the two dispatchers, the plumbing inspector and the two bus driver positions are the only positions you can get in and meet that target goal. But even with this, it's a 4.21 mil reduction, so it would still represent a property tax decrease to the general public. The final mill levy would be 121.1 through that recommended option. So just to do a recap and succinct it here, this is just the city manager proposed options here. You have the partially funded option on the left, the fully funded option on the right, which includes what those two mill levies would be, which is in the blue down in the bottom left corner, and the total reductions in there in detail through those. With that, any questions on those? And I'll leave it on this previous slide here that's kind of the summary slide there.
Any questions at this time for Harold on the presentation? Alderman Padugula?
Yeah. So, and I appreciate all the hard work you guys have put in on this. What you're suggesting is a way of meeting the goal of cutting, correct?
Correct.
What are the other taxing authorities doing? I mean, I appreciate how gracious we're being and I think it's important to hold the line, but I'm, well, tell me first of all what the other entities are doing.
Well, I was, I mean, they're all going through the same process we are, right? They've presented their preliminary budgets and they're determined whether or not that's publicly palable to their constituency and then either holding true to what their preliminary budget was or they're reducing. So for example, the county, I think, proposed a 10-mil increase. I think they're in the process of reducing that as well, where they fall, I don't know. Again, you know, we have the preliminary budget that staff has presented to you, which was our original ask, and that was, that was the 123-mil levy. So you have that option that we presented or you have these other options that we've presented depending on what the goal and objective of the council is. Again, the goal was is to try and minimize any property tax increase so the public can consider a potential property tax increase at their approval for the school improvements that are being anticipated to come forward to the public. So.
I understand that their ultimate numbers may be different, but it's interesting that everybody else is proposing an increase and some of whom are proposing a larger increase than we were. I'm comfortable with holding it firm, but if everybody else starts with an increase and we're moving very quickly toward a decrease, that just doesn't seem fair to me. It seems like we're asking the citizens and the employees and the services that the citizens rely on to be in proportion cut when everybody else is increasing. I have no problems with keeping it flat. My preference would be to go with the original recommended budget, but I'm concerned that we're, you know, cutting, you know, now even. That's my concern. And.
If I might, Alderman Padugula, their preliminary budgets, just like ours, is proposing an increase. Ours is showing an increase. And until we see what their actual process looks like on whether they're cutting, which I believe the county commission chairman indicated that they were going to be cutting that down significantly from their 10-mil proposed increase. I have not followed what the public school or the park board is doing at the same time as they have not gone through, I think, their public hearings to get an idea of where they're going to fall. So I don't want to, I personally don't want to jump to any conclusions on what they're planning as they very well could have that same assumption with us is that we're coming with an increase regardless. So just keep that in mind.
That's absolutely true. That's absolutely true. We won't know until the end.
If I may, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
And respond to. I want to be clear, these are new asked for positions. These positions do not currently exist in the organization. So while it's being proposed right now of a reduction in what we asked for in the preliminary budget, these are not cuts of existing positions. And so while it does, these options, many of them come back, and if they were approved by council would represent a reduction in property tax, we're not eliminating any existing positions now. So like the code enforcement one that we found in there, that was already previously removed based off of other decisions and reorganization and those types of things. So that wasn't a reduction coming back to try and cut costs for this budget. So these are, this is a balance between some projects and fine tuning the numbers to the reality of what our current numbers are with our current positions. There's still some revenue there that should the council choose to add additional services and provide some relief to city staff to do the jobs we've been tasked with. These are some positions that help us do that, but these are new positions that are not currently approved by council to be within our organization. So while they do represent a reduction in cost, we are not cutting any existing positions. we are not cutting any existing positions to accomplish that. So. And I think the staff's done a great job of presenting a budget to the public and to the council that allows us to continue to do our jobs. And even here, depending on what you do, is still going to provide some help and relief to staff in the organization, but still potentially be able to do it with a flat mill levy increase or a potential decrease. Or should the council choose to go with the previously presented budget, a two mil increase, which going back to that first slide, I think represented just under $11 annually for every $100,000 of assessed value of your property. I think that's a, a pretty dynamic proposal and represents some, some really astute work by the staff to, to give you these options going forward.
Alderwoman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been spending a great deal of time going through this budget. As one of my tasks as council president is to write a letter of recommendation to share with all of you and to share with the public. And that letter is due on Friday, so I've been working on it. And things that I have been considering as part of my recommendations were first to take care of our existing employees. They are our greatest asset and we need to take care of them. And in this budget, we are doing that. We are honoring the pay plan and certainly we're not cutting any positions. So I think that doing what we need to do for them is one of my highest priorities. I looked at our aspirations that we developed during our council retreat and I've taken them into consideration. I've been thinking, as, as Alderman Padagula mentioned, that, you know, I wanted to know what the other taxing authorities were doing. But each time that I thought about that, I came back to the fact that we are elected to represent the city of Minot and we need to take care of the city of Minot. We can certainly watch what's happening within our community and within our county, but we have a job that we need to do and that is to take care of the city of Minot. As a side note, personally, I certainly support a second high school. And as an individual, I will do what I need to do to move that forward because I think that it is something that's necessary. But I couldn't take that into consideration as I was considering this budget. And then last but not least, I was looking at what I thought we needed very soon. I think that all of the positions that are listed in here are warranted, but I don't know that all of them are warranted in 2022. And with that, I do have a preliminary proposal. This is certainly not my final recommendations because I wanted us to have a conversation tonight and that may change a little bit about how we, how we move forward and, and what I recommend. But Mr. City Manager, do you have the, the slide of my recommendations? And again, these are not finalized. They are just up for consideration. So I was in, in agreement with the cuts that were in that upper left-hand box. I, I thought that that was a nice way of, of finding some savings. And you can see that the positions that I'm thinking are needed at this time are the police department tech, the, the plumbing inspector, the mechanic at Public Works, the one property maintenance worker and, and one bus driver. So that would be a total cut of 402,248, a savings of 668,000, which would be a 3.11 mil decrease. So not quite, we're, oh yeah, excuse me, it would exceed, excuse me, it would exceed what we were looking for, for cuts. But again, my, my objective is not to completely just cut. It was to look at what I thought was necessary right now.
It's the partial funding. Do you have one with the full funding?
I believe so.
Okay. There it is.
I believe, yeah, there we go. There we go. So you can see the numbers there as well.
Any questions for Alderwoman Olson on her proposal? Alderman Padagula.
Just a comment. I like it. The two things I don't like, and I think it overlaps significantly with the alternative that the city manager has proposed to us. I like the idea of, of kind of going into it stepwise. I think there is a, a shock, a sticker shock with 18 positions and that's problematic. And I think part of the reason we have the sticker shock is we've not kept pace over the years. I had sticker shock when I saw this. So I think the long-range solution is to keep pace with the demands for services that people in the community have. Having said that, we're, we're stuck with that. We have to make up for it somehow. The only two things I disagree with, and I disagree very strongly, and I want to be very clear about that at the beginning, is the two dispatcher positions. They are overwhelmed in that department and that's a key function in terms of public safety for the community. The others I'm fine with and I really like the, the stepping in, not giving every department what they want right now. Kind of, you know, we tighten our belts a little bit, but those are the two I'm very concerned about. And if there'd be some way to restore those, I, I would be very comfortable and I would strongly support it, but those I'm very, very worried about. The others I'm fine with.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Olson, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. And, and I certainly left those in my recommendation for a long time. I was following one of the recommendations that, that Chief Klug had made in his prior, prioritization. In his recommendations, he did cut the two dispatch positions. I fully understand that he was looking to, to retain that PIO position. So I understand why he was doing it. But that was what helped me determine that. But again, that, that's why I wanted to present this so that we could have discussion. Like I said, not finalized at all.
You've met your goal. Alderwoman Evans.
Derek, can you go back to Chief Klug's option two A? I forget what, I want to see what those priorities were. Or Chief Klug, you can just tell me with those five positions, what were the ones that you prioritized?
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, my priority, I had PIO number one, evidence tech number two, or the forensic tech number two, the two dispatch positions, and then I had the admin clerk as my fifth.
And then which, so in this one, it was the PIO and tech that like if you had to with the five.
Correct.
Pick your favorite child, it would.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now compared, okay, Derek, can we, I'm sorry, I have you jumping all around. The CM fully funded option one. Okay, so that is. So I guess I'm curious, Mr. Stewart, why you, why there's the discrepancy in you feeling dispatch was needed as the recommendation and the police chief had different priorities? Like where did that come from?
So ultimately it goes back to, we don't pay 100% of the cost of dispatch.
Okay.
And so if our partners are willing to help bear this cost, we should probably do that while they're interested because I'm afraid and fearful that in the future, we've tried to come back and add these in future years and they say, we're willing to do it last year and you chose not to do it. It must not be that important. So you want to add it, you pay for it. So that's some of my concern. Secondly, I think the chief has given a, a very good argument for why those dispatchers are needed. And I believe that we can meet the PIO needs in other ways. Ultimately, those, those are why I prioritize those over. So it was a combination between the co-funding, that we're not paying 100% of that. And then just knowing the needs that we have in that, in that organization right now.
Would you disagree with that, Chief Klug?
I think this is probably some difficult areas. We don't want to be putting department heads against CM.
Well, I know, but we're gonna, we're talking about not like giving him positions. Like I want, you know, to hear from the people who are going to be impacted.
Alderwoman Evans, but it does get into some very difficult, very difficult territory regarding our CM.
How are we going to make our decisions if we don't know what the, the person who is in charge of the public safety is?
The point I'm trying to make, Alderwoman Evans, is exactly the point of which we have a CM and trying to push department heads against that in the public setting.
Mr. Mayor.
We can continue, please.
And I, I am willing to answer that. I have had this conversation with Mr. Stewart as well. The only reason I disagree is that to me, we also have a responsibility to inform the public and that is the role of the PIO and that's where we fall short. I think we do, in the emergency, I think we do okay. With our dispatching, with answering phones, we, we get the coverage there. Part two of that is to take that information and disseminate it to the public. So that is why I have that position ranked number one, because that's where we fall short.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Other questions at this time regarding Alderwoman Olson's recommendations or other scenarios that have been presented?
Will this presentation, Mr. Mayor, be available to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Evans.
Mr. Stewart, were there any other options that like were entertained other than like playing with these 18 FTE positions, like anything else that was a potential?
Let me clarify a couple of things here in response to that. One is the, the 18 full-time employees includes all the enterprise funds as well.
Right.
So when we talk about 18, that's all of them included. So we're not talking about 18.
So let me clarify, the general funds.
So, yes. And so you do have in the upper left-hand corner and all of these are the additional proposals that were made here with regards to other things that we're looking, looked at other than just these positions. But to be honest with you, staff did a good job of going through and really trimming out a lot of that extra stuff. There wasn't really a whole lot to go back and cut. I do want to make one other point here too, though. And that is Chief Klug did a great job of coming back with, where'd that number go? It was close to $158,000 and, yeah, almost $159,000 in cuts. So personally and professionally, I'm a little reluctant to take that $159,000 and not revest a significant portion back into the positions he has requested, which is another reason why I included those two dispatch positions. Because that gets you much closer to that $159,000 that he added to this to make that work. So I was a little reluctant to, you know, say thank you for the $159,000 in cuts and you get $65,000 back. So I thought that was a little bit more fair and a little bit more balanced, which again calculated into my recommendations back. Ultimately, and I'm happy to continue to answer questions, but I think it would be helpful and it may help the council with this conversation, it may help staff, is we probably need to clearly delineate the answer of, are we fine with the partially funded methodology or should we do the fully funded methodology? And personally, my recommendation there would be to do the fully funded methodology because that will pay dividends in future budgets. No, the next several budgets aren't going to be easy. Doing the budget process is never easy. But this will alleviate some pressure on future budgets if you make the decision now based off of a fully funded methodology as opposed to the partially funded methodology.
Alderman Padagula.
Question about that. When you say funded, that would be projections and that would be setting aside money. That wouldn't necessarily be spending the money, correct?
That is the drawback, but that only affects you for one year of not having that fully in the budget. And so for future budgets after 2022, we have 100% of that burden on us. So it'll get, if you do the partially funded, that gets you through to 2022, but we've really stretched ourselves thin in that we're already behind.
The curve.
The curve when we start the fiscal year '23 budget because now we've already committed to adding all these positions in. There's people in those jobs. And I don't want to put us in a position where we're coming back and eliminating positions in future budgets.
And you're not figuring any money we might get from the federal government in terms of COVID reconstruction and, and infrastructure reconstruction, things like that, correct or not?
No, because those are one-time revenues and I never recommend using one-time revenues to budget long-term costs.
What's your best professional recommendation in terms of the fully funded versus partially? Before you answer that, let me say that I'm attracted to the partially funded because it gets us halfway there and it, I think, meets some significant needs. The thing that keeps me from endorsing that fully, I have this internal conflict myself too, is that it perpetuates in a sense this, maybe fantasy is too strong a word, but this not, not being totally straight with ourselves and the public. That's the problem I'm having. I can easily endorse the partial funding and I think we can, you know, as the way staff have scrimped and saved over the years, I think we can come up with the difference. The fully funding gives me pause, but in a way it seems like the more mature, realistic option. And then the probability being we won't be spending and hiring all those people right away and we'll have a little bit built up and the economy will probably be improving a bit and things like that. So what's, what's your best recommendation to us, Mr. City Manager?
Trying to get to the slide that adds both of these up. So these two are my recommendations. If you choose to do the partially funded, the one on the left is what I'm recommending. If you choose to do fully funded, the one on the right is what I recommend. If you ask me to, to prioritize one over the other, my recommendation would be to do the fully funded option.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Alderwoman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess for me, it's going to be helpful if we've set a priority on whether we're looking at the mills or we're looking at the needs. Because it, it changes our perspective.
Yeah.
Mr. Public Works Director.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to add one comment in looking at Alderwoman Olson's recommendation, where she had shown funding one bus driver, just know that really doesn't work. When we look at the routes, it's not a matter of adding one driver for each route that we're doing. We have to adjust the routes, all of them, and really the two drivers there to cover a full week's period, which is 60 hours. So we need the two drivers to cover the, the one bus that would cover that. So I hate to say it, but it's kind of a two or nothing with that, but I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
I do want to mention, so, you know, the proposals here tonight were to meet the directive council gave me last Monday to bring back options that would maintain the mill levy at or below what we asked for last year. The preliminary budget that we proposed included a mill levy of 123.57. So the council can do anything in between and I have the spreadsheet here. If you want to go through positions that you think need to be done, I can do a, a real-time calculation of the fully funded or the partially funded option. And I can tell you what that mill levy impact will be immediately if the council wants to do that going forward. So we have the resources here to go through other alternatives if that's what the council wants to do. You just need to tell me which positions you want in or out and whether you want it as a fully funded or partially funded mechanism.
Alderwoman Evans.
I do, if you can do, I'd like to swap the two dispatches for the PIO and see what that looks like.
Using Alder, Alderwoman Olson's recommendations with fully funded?
Using yours.
Using mine? So you want to remove the dispatchers and put the PIO back in?
Yep.
I'm looking here real quick. So what I have right now is the police department PIO position in, the forensic technician position in, no dispatchers. Plumbing inspector is budget is in, the two bus drivers are in, and then the non-career adjustment is in. That is a total of.
Didn't have the tech in before. You added, you just added them.
Correct. All right. I'll zero that one out as well. So that cuts just under 955,000. Leaves a total mill levy of 120.86, which is a reduction of .43 from the 121.29, which is what we. is a reduction of .43 from the 121.29, which is what we asked for last year.
I was just looking to see if you had any further questions on that.
No.
Okay.
Because we're not, we're just asking questions.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for that.
Yep. Any other questions or scenarios that we want to see? Mr. Pedner. Alderman Pedner.
Just have a question for Dan. I think it was covered in the last meeting, but just to refresh my memory, what is the timeline on those new bus routes being reworked and actually having those routes online? Is it in 2022, or are we waiting for the hospital to get done? Just maybe some information on that.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pedner, our proposed schedule originally was to bring those routes online July 1 of next year. We looked at delaying that three months in some of the budget savings, but originally, we were looking at bringing them online in July, so they would be all done and operating when the new hospital opens the end of 2022, as I've been told is their date.
It's not going to happen. And Alderman Pedner, and maybe Mr. Jonison, and this is just high-level discussions, too, in my understanding, the hospital will be done the end of 2022, but likely not fully occupied until spring of 2023, simply because they don't want to move in the middle of winter and some of the other logistics. But that's still a long way away as well.
Correct.
Any follow-ups, Alderman Pedner?
Not at this time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dan. Alderman Evans. Alderwoman Evans.
Well, since Mr. Stewart can do it, so how about swapping out the two bus drivers and then putting in dispatch back in?
That'd be a total reduction of just under $945,000. Final mill levy would be 120.91, which would still be a .38 reduction from the 121.29 that was submitted last year.
Thank you.
Mr. Finance Director.
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, I just wanted to point out that those bus positions are funded from the federal government at 50% cost share.
Okay.
So if you cut those out, you're actually only saving 50% of that dollar amount on there, and the dispatchers are 65.35, split with the county where the city pays 65% of that cost. So it's not quite apples-to-apples
Okay.
exchanging one for the other one.
Thank you for that clarification.
How much was the federal funding?
35.
No, federal was 50/50 on the buses.
On the buses?
Yeah.
Yes.
50%.
Back to Alderwoman Olson's comment, and I think that that's something, too, that we should decide on coming into our first reading at our next, at our next meeting, is whether or not we're focusing on dollars, mills, or services. Alderwoman Olson.
My question was for Mr. Stewart, too. The number that you just gave us to put the bus drivers in there as well, and then tell us what the mill levy would be. So you'd have the dispatch in there, and you'd have the bus drivers in there.
So what I'm quoting now is the police department PIO position is in, two dispatchers, the plumbing inspector, two bus drivers, and then the non-career adjustment. That's a reduction in 826,231. Mill levy is at 121.46, which would be a .17 increase over the 121.29 we asked for last year, but is a reduction from the 123.57 that was included in the preliminary budget.
Thank you.
Further questions or other scenarios? Alderwoman Olson.
This is just a question to everyone, because we had put out last week that we wanted to hear from residents. I know we haven't had first reading, but Derek had gotten the message out that, you know, we were open to some phone calls or to some, you know, questions and concerns. I did not receive any. Did anyone else receive any?
Very good question, Alderwoman Olson. Alderman Janser.
Incidentally, just in circulating and talking to a few people, I was encouraged to try to hold property taxes down and to use whatever methodology and good judgment that we could do to do that. So I think this, I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just comment, I think this discussion is valuable, and I think this is our job, regardless of what other entities are doing. They're struggling through the same process, and regardless of where they end up, you know, this is our job on behalf of the citizens to try to make these decisions in the face of more desires and needs than resources. And so, you know, I think, you know, adding, you know, six or eight new employees plus, and I agree with the city manager that we should deal with this non-career, full-time thing, because those people are employed by us already, and they're working full-time hours. I think that that's not trivial, and it certainly takes steps towards answering some of the most urgent and most timely, as Alderman Olson points out, needs that we have. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure where exactly we'll end up, but I think, I think this discussion is valuable, and I think we're making some headway in getting towards a final decision.
Thank you. Look around to see if anyone else had, I'll just interject here while we, while we think about that. The only interaction that I had from any constituents is, was actually from older couple in southeast Minot that were calling about people speeding through the neighborhood and wanting two officers to be sitting in their, on their street right around the hours of 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM, and to which I did have to ask if they understood how many police officers we have on any given patrol during that time, and then force the issue about the budget, is if we are asking more and more of our police officers to handle more and more issues, it requires more police officers. Through, summarizing through all of that discussion, of course, being retired, they wanted to see the tax levy held as level as possible, but then also mentioned that they wanted increasing, increased services. So we can take that, I mean, in jest, but that is the reality of what every one of us sits up here and also has to face. The other point that I just wanted to make very briefly here, as we talk about the bus routes in Trinity, as we talk about that southwest corridor, it is inevitable that we will see more development around the hospital, which is already planned. You can see the signs, if you drive out there, that that will require an increase in services, whether it be patrol or snow removal, ambulance service, what have you, or emergency service, rather. So that is on the horizon and in not-too-distant future either. So as we take a look and prioritize, I would expect next budget session, whoever is sitting at the dais, to be sitting up here facing a lot of the same questions of where those priorities are in maintaining services at an adequate level. Mr. Stewart?
Just for the sake, as a reminder, and for the sake of the public, I mean, we've been focused on the direction of the council from the last meeting of keeping the property tax steady or no increase, but I also want to remind, you know, the council and the public, there's a lot of good things in this budget, right? There's a lot of progress in this budget already built in, so let's not lose sight of all that. I mean, this includes progress on NOS, this includes progress on flood mitigation, this includes continuing with the new city hall, this includes building fire station number five, this includes buying a new apparatus for the fire department, this includes fixing the retaining wall. There's a lot of positive things that are also included in this budget, and with what's proposed to you here tonight, depending on, no matter what option you take, we are also providing some relief to staff. This also includes a market rate adjustment for employees, it includes a step rate increase for employees, it includes absorbing a major increase in health insurance costs. All that is still built in the budget, and we're still here talking about, can we add a few positions? So I don't want the whole conversation to turn negative with regards to the budget. This is a very prudent, very efficient, very effective budget, and we're still potentially talking about even a potential decrease in property taxes, and still accomplishing all of that as well, so.
Very good point. Mr. City Manager. Alderman Padagula.
In terms of informing the public, I looked through my notes from the days we spent touring and talking with staff. We spent three full eight-hour days or seven-hour days going into 9:30 at night, and I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. We spent many, many, many hours getting briefed by staff, visiting facilities, looking at equipment needs, and things like that. And I think we have a much better understanding than we've ever had as a council of what the needs are, what the desires are, and I think the finance director and the city manager have done a good job of trying to winnow some of those desires down, and I think we're getting a much fuller picture than we've ever had. It's also interesting to me and important that when we had those discussions with department heads, each of them volunteered numerous ways in which they had already economized, numerous ideas they had for saving money. One, for example, was trying to get more people to get their water bills electronically rather than us having to mail them. There was idea after idea after idea, and I would trust, I would imagine, that Mr. Stewart is keeping track of these as a notebook and is writing all of these down and asking his department heads to do the same. And one of the things I'd like to see us incorporate, and if it's happening already, I apologize, and I certainly would praise everybody, but to, you know, maybe take half a day a year as part of a strategic planning process with the department heads, and asking them to kind of keep track of that. What could you do? If we gave you a little bit more money, like to have better software systems that keep track of things, what could you do to save? I see a lot of pent-up demand to save money if we only gave them the tools and the leadership and the organizational support. And that really struck me when I went through those materials. That was, that was very impressive. It wasn't just the give me this, give me that, but I have these ideas that not only can I give better services to people, but I can also save some money. And that's the spirit I'd like to capture, too, in this discussion, so it isn't just becoming, how many mills do we save, or increase, or positions, or whatever. I'd like to see that, that spirit of creativity I saw, I think, for the first time, or at least to such an extent, kind of grow and blossom. So there are lots of good things happening.
Alderman Pedner, did you have something to add?
I did, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to, again, thank staff for putting the work in to give us these options, and I wanted to reiterate, because I think city manager, the city manager made probably the most important point of this entire budget is that there are a lot of good things, and we're talking about a few positions here at the finish line that, again, are justified, that, again, can be justified, and there's more positions that weren't in this budget that could be justified. To the fully funded versus partially funded, I think fully funded is the way to go. I think we're being truthful to ourselves and taxpayers on the true cost of these positions going that route in the future. And again, just wanted to reiterate, there are a lot of good things, there's a lot of progress happening. We're not, we're not at a standstill. We're not trying to come to a screeching halt as a council and move us backwards in time. And in regards to, in regards to the concerns of what other taxing entities are doing, I get it, we are elected to worry about the city of Minot and to sit on city council, but we also are stewards of, you know, if you want to talk about buzzwords from our retreat, whether you're a trustee or a steward of your, of your community. Right now, in my mindset, I'm trying to be a steward. I'm trying to show that chivalry is not dead. I'm trying to hold the door for another organization to fulfill their needs and essentially bring the community up as a whole, and that's, that's my mindset. And did I get any individuals to reach out to me from our last conversation? Not particularly from last Monday to today, but I have throughout the course of the year, and I think we all do. We all get, you know, the pounding to the table for more services that benefit individuals, and maybe with no mindfulness to where those costs actually come from. So again, out of this, I want the headline. I want the headline that shows the city of Minot is doing its part to hold the line so that Minot Public can get another school, so that our community can move forward. Again, I'm super appreciative to staff, to the city manager for coming with these options, for council members for entertaining these and going through this process. This is a more detailed process, and I thought we had a pretty detailed budget process in the past, in the past couple of years that I've been on council, and this has even taken it a step further. So I'm very grateful for that. I appreciate the options that have come forward, and again, just wanted to reiterate where my mindset is and my goals are. I trust and I believe in our staff. I know they've done wonders with what they have, and I never want to be, to brush their needs or needs aside, but if there's ever a year, I think, to hold the line on a mill increase or a budget increase, this is, this is the year in my mindset. So just wanted to put those out there.
Alderman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, after last Monday's meeting, Mr. City Manager, your comments about the RPMs revving up for the, for the staff, that really hung with me. And looking at the screen we see right now, the partially funded right now is more appealing to me. It puts, it puts more people in a position to reduce those RPMs. And a lot can happen in a year to our economy. A lot can happen to develop that southwest corridor, Mr. Mayor, like you said. So a lot can change. My feeling, I agree with Alderman Padagula. My feeling about, I would rather have frontline workers, i.e. the dispatch, not revving their engines up to the red line. And if we can put two more dispatchers on early enough to help them reduce those RPMs, I think, in my opinion, I think that's a good move. Looking at the partially funded, I think, in my opinion, across the board, we reduce those RPMs considerably. And yes, it only gets us halfway, but I also feel next year, I feel between now and the next budget cycle, a lot can happen that could help us alleviate some of that. So another thing I have to point out is, one thing that was very evident in the proposed budget was the work that staff and the management team did to make room for these staff, for these staff recommendations, new staff recommendations. The cuts they made across the board to the other parts of their budget was, was very clearly evident to me, and I think that is a compliment to the city manager's leadership and how he worked with the management team to put together, to put together a proposed budget that, that really does achieve everything we need. And so we're a ways to go before the final, before we take a final vote. My mind is open. I'm looking at it without blinders, but as of right now, I would rather see the partially funded, so we get more, more people, more staff in here to reduce the load, so to speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other comments or discussion? Alderwoman Olson.
This is just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I think we would be remiss to say that we only have one school district, and no one has said that we only have one school district in our community, but we actually have three public school districts and two private schools. And so we are focusing some of our conversations on a second high school for Minot Public Schools, but I think it's important to note that there are other school districts within the city limits of Minot. the city limits of Minot.
Other discussion at this time? I would look to our upcoming first reading as likely the motion of what direction that we are heading, whether it is partially or fully funded, and right along with that, which recommendation that is going to be moving forward, and I would expect perhaps some good discussion and some amendments to whatever motion is made, but I would hope that we each come with an idea of which mechanism that, that we're looking at in consideration. Alderman Janser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess this is a question for either City Manager, Stewart, or maybe, maybe David Lakefield. So, in the, so, in, in the, in the partial funding, we are saying, okay, we, we want a position, but we're not going to be able to hire it for six months, or we won't, you know, we won't have it for six months, in, but, and so, so for instance, if, in any of the, in any of the ones that we're recommending as fully funded, are any of those going to end up, you know, so say we authorize a bus driver for $59,320 for 2022 budget, but Dan has already just said that they were going to have that bus route running, you know, in July, so we already know that we aren't going to probably get that person hired and get him rolling until July. So, how does that reality affect which positions and some of those numbers?
Mr. City Manager.
Great question, and that's really kind of the crux of the dilemma here, right? So, you know, your best practice is to build the full cost of the budget in, and we run into this throughout the year all the time, right? You, you, you as a council authorize a certain number of positions for us to have within our organization and fill, and with those authorized positions that you've already given us with the 418 full-time employees that we have, very seldom are we ever at full staff. You know, the last Police Chief's report talked about several positions within his organization that are unfilled. Those are built 100% into the budget, and we have savings when those positions are vacant for whatever reason they have. But in reality, and that's really the, the methodology and the beauty of the partially funded positions, is we've, we've really kind of cut that down very efficiently and very effectively in saying, the real cost of what we need for next year is this, because we can't fill those positions. So, for example, the, the bus driver positions, we can follow the same methodology we do with the other 400-plus positions, and we can build that 100% in there, but at the end of the day, staff is going to tell you, we are not going to spend $59,000 per employee during fiscal year 2022, because we can't fill them that fast, we won't have it approved by the federal government fast enough to do that, but it is built into the, into the budget, so the next year when we roll over, that's already accounted for, just like we do all the other positions. So, you have this dilemma here between the reality and the best practice for future budgets that we're trying to delineate here between. Did that answer your question?
I think mostly. So, so, okay, so let me ask the follow-up question then. So, so, okay, so, knowing that some of these fully funded positions, because I, because I do kind of favor the fully funded reality, I mean, I, I think that gives us a clearer perspective of what we're getting ourselves into, because we're going to have to face it, I mean, everybody agrees, we're going to have to face it in the 23 budget if we, if we put them in there. So, I think that's a good, a good piece of reality to be viewing. On the other hand, if we look at those fully funded positions that we want to have, that are acceptable, let's say, under the fully funded approach, but now we know that we're not going to need bus drivers for six months or nine months, the construction projects always delay might be, you know, 20, like somebody said, spring of 2023 before, before they're really needed. Does it make sense in sort of a hybrid of your methodological explanation to sort of look at that savings, which is quite likely, and maybe, maybe add in something else, another position?
Yeah, my spreadsheets aren't really built to calculate a hybrid between partially funded and fully funded, it's either all partially funded as was presented by the management team, or it's all fully funded, we could look at that, but you're still going to run into the same challenge with some of those, if you partially fund it, that we're sort of going to have to, I mean, basically you're pre-spending financial obligations for the 2023 budget.
Okay.
And then that's really the conundrum that we're at, you know, yes, if we go with the fully funded, I can tell you right now, you're going to obligate it, and you're going to create it, and we're not going to spend all that money, so that's money that's being collected but not spent.
And that money would go back into the general fund.
It goes back into reserves, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I'll have a piece on that here in a moment, but Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Janser, I just wanted to point out as well that we did program into this budget using cash reserves in the general fund of $2.9 million, and that money came from actual budget savings in the 2020 budget, so that was money that was appropriated in 2020 and was not spent, and that's from a multitude of different things, including open positions, a number of different items, but that was money that we actually had in cash savings to offset any increase in this budget. There's a few things in this proposed budget that we're already starting to dip into some of that, and that is this partial funding of positions, you know, next year we'll have those, or in 2023, we'll have those positions for an entire year, and as well as the police department adjustments. Typically, we program this budget on a salary snapshot of the positions and what salaries they are at a given point in time, and we don't go back and adjust that while we're in our budget process. With those adjustments for the police department, those are adjustments that have been, have taken place since that snapshot was taken. So, we're already starting to, in essence, borrow on next year's budget savings to backstop this budget, so that's a little bit of a concern when we look at just the partial funding portion of this.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Pittner, I heard you chime in.
Thank you, Mayor, and a question for, for City Manager, as far as, maybe just to clarify, partial versus fully funded, if we go the partially funded route, what sort of increase dollar-wise do we lock ourselves into in 2023, if that makes sense, versus going the fully funded route?
Alderman Pittner, let me log back into my computer here real quick. So, the difference between the partially funded, so we built in, the current budget has 600, just under $630,000 built into the budget. When you go to fully funded, that number goes to just over a million, so it's a difference of $373,323 is the difference between fully funded and partially funded. So, if you do the partially funded route next year, we're already starting off trying to figure out how to find another $373,000 to make next year's budget work.
Thank you, and that's what I'm looking for, because that's why in my mind, I go to the fully funded route, because just for, to break this down in my mind, and if I, if I miss the mark, if, if it's the 15th of the month that I'm looking for a place to rent, I'm not going to look at what it costs to rent a place for 15 days, I'm looking at what it costs for an entire month, because next month I've got 30 days to pay for, not just 15 of this month. So, that's why the fully funded, I, I don't want us to lie to ourselves, I feel like the city of Minot has gotten in trouble in the past, being dishonest with ourselves on what the cost of running government is, and I think going with the fully funded is the most responsible way to go, so that we're not lying to ourselves or taxpayers on, on what it, what it costs to hold these positions and, and lock ourselves into something, a budget cycle, two years down the road, or, or, or one budget cycle beyond this one. So, those are my thoughts, again, why I would support the fully funded.
Any other thoughts or comments or questions at this time? Alderwoman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm debating whether I should say this or not, but there is no perfect science in, in knowing exactly when positions are going to be filled, so as, as Mr. Stewart described, we have approved some positions, and, you know, through just change over someone quitting and hiring a new person, we know that those positions are not always fully funded, but here, in a fully funded sense, we're taxing our residents knowing full well that we are not going to fill those positions. So, we are, and, and the number isn't great, but I mean, we're taking dollars from people to fund positions that we know we won't fill for a time, and that's kind of a hard pill to swallow for some people.
Alderman Janser.
I guess I, I take Alderman Olson's point, but on the other hand, remember that those dollars do go back into the general fund, and we're using them in this budget to deal with some of the expenses that, that we have in the, in the 2022 year, so I, I think I can make myself live with that little bit of difference.
And that really is actually, Alderman Janser and the rest of the council, the point that I was going to make earlier was, we have, I would like to think a fairly good recent history of taking a look at what we have in that general fund to backfill $2.9 million in cash savings, which would have been likely a lot of unfilled positions over the last few years between the police department, fire department, where we've had some of those positions that we just couldn't fill for, you know, the, the employment reasons that were out there. But a lot of those cash savings then have gone into one-time expenditures when we have a major water main break in the middle of winter, or some of those unexpected, unexpected costs that have come up to where there is a little bit of savings that you can dive into. I absolutely agree with Alderwoman Olson that it's really difficult to say that, you know, we're going to tax this, knowing that we're not going to fill it, however, it is also locking us into an, a guaranteed then increase the following year. There, there really is no perfect answer to that conundrum. I would tend to lean towards the fully funded option, knowing that if there are some one-time expenditures that can go towards those positions to help bring down the RPMs, so to speak, a little bit, that, that very well could be utilized. If there is a perfect hybrid mechanism for this, I would love to hear it, but I just don't know within the mechanisms that we have that it really is fully functional without obligating ourselves in the following year, so that's where I'm at. Any further comments, discussion, before we start heading towards our first reading with what will likely be a couple of different motions? Alderman, Alderwoman Olson.
I mean, all I can say is, we do want to hear from residents, we, we honestly, sincerely want to hear, and, you know, and my question certainly will be, you know, what's more important to you, is it the mill levy, or is it, you know, having the services provided and having the employees available to provide those services? I'm, I'm very curious to know.
I will finish one last comment, one last thought, and I, I think this is a credit to the folks sitting up here at the dais, the folks that are sitting out here, and those that might be watching at home within our department heads. One comment that has many comments that have resonated over the last probably 24 months and perhaps even 36 months or longer, is that folks out in the community have seen a substantial improvement in how we have gone after a lot of our infrastructure and trying to bring it back up into a better grade, and most of the time we hear about roads, but even addressing some of the other infrastructure needs and, and bus routes and just general services to the public. You know, it's everything from waste management all, all the way up to, you know, how, how our, our police folks are, are trained. So, I, I agree with absolutely everything that the City Manager had, had indicated earlier, is that we've been focusing a lot on, on a couple of mills here, there's a lot of great things in this budget, and there's a lot of folks out there that are very appreciative of all the hard work that has gone into improvements that, that are seen out in the community, you know, even looking at public works and how we've kind of retooled and reshaped the, the collaboration, a meeting with developers in those planning processes, so things have come a long way. I'm very proud to see all of the hard work that has gone into this one, and certainly we've got some tough decisions on what that's going to look like here in the first and second reading, and I certainly hope that we have a little more public input, and that folks, if they, if they do come, more than, more than welcome to speak their mind too, but within the idea of services as well, what is it they want to see with services within those recommendations? So, Mr. City Manager.
And to kind of build off of that a little bit as well, I think this just, and one, let me say that this is probably the best budget conversation I've had with a council in my career, so I definitely appreciate your, your effort on this, you're staying at a high level, but at the same time, really doing your jobs and your responsibilities of, of being good stewards for the public, and, and I appreciate that. But I think this conversation will also be, have some better resources to us next year as we have the community survey results, and I think that will really help you have an understanding of the priorities of the community, how we're doing in providing those services, and where they think that we need to improve, and so I'm really looking forward to next year of having that additional component of the, that community survey result, and helping staff and the council to have this conversation and make sure that we're, we're dialing these decisions in to its best investment, return on investment and expectations and priorities of the, of the community as a whole.
Any final comments or thoughts before we move on to our last item? Seeing none, we're on to item four then, and that is adjournment, we have no further items to discuss, we are adjourned.